Okay, we're gonna, sorry for the delay. We're gonna start this meeting. The chairman is apparently stuck on the freeway. An accident somewhere on the 101 that has delayed the chairman Adukas from getting here. So we'll get started here. The first item would be the roll call.
All right. Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner McPhail.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
And Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Okay.
Then the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would encourage everybody to stand up and... Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which rules us, one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all.
It's very good to see a lot of people out there. This is the time for public comments for anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to approach and say anything? If not, we will move to the next item, which is case PL 170139. And I'll turn it over to county staff for the presentation.
Good morning. Good morning, planning commissioners. So I want to introduce to you Owen Deutsch. He's been part of the team here at the county since about 2015, working on various items. He's working directly under Tricia Meyer, so he will give the presentation this morning.
Okay, Owen, you're up.
Good morning, members of the planning commission and Chair Dukas, whenever she arrives. My name is Owen Deutsch, project planner for the mobile home park overlay zone and senior mobile home park overlay zone project, case number PL 170139. I am also the former administrator of the county's mobile home park rent control program. As of yesterday, we had received six public comments on the item before you, which are included as exhibit nine in the hearing packet. And we've also received a number of late comments, which are also included in the hearing packet as the exhibits subsequent to exhibit nine. The intent of the proposed amendments to the noncoastal zoning ordinance is to establish two overlay zones which protect all of the unincorporated county's mobile home parks from redevelopment and reserve a certain amount of spaces for seniors. Today, I will review the background of this project, the direction received from the Board of Supervisors, and the project's intended purpose. I will then review the county's regulatory authority in this matter, summarize the specific provisions within the proposed ordinances, and present the required findings and recommended actions for your commission's consideration. There are 25 mobile home parks in the unincorporated county with approximately 1,300 spaces shown here. We estimate that about 3,500 residents have found a home in one of these parks, many of them for dozens of years. The sizes of the county's mobile home parks range widely, from two to 174 spaces, and all but one of these parks are subject to the county's mobile home park rent control program. Over half of the spaces in these parks are occupied by seniors over the age of 55. Eight of these 25 mobile home parks have operated for years as senior mobile home parks. In these parks, the vast majority of spaces are occupied by seniors, if not exclusively occupied by seniors. Seven out of eight of these parks are also subject to rent control. And 18 of the 25 mobile home parks are within supervisory district one, and all of the senior mobile home parks are within supervisory district one. Mobile home parks are the focus of today's hearing because they are both uniquely valuable and vulnerable. They are communities in which residents are substantially invested and offer an opportunity for homeownership, which is increasingly difficult to find. And yet, because residents don't own the land underneath their homes, and because relocation of their homes usually is not a feasible option, the risk of redevelopment and eviction is especially threatening. The large-scale redevelopment of homes is something which simply isn't seen with other types of owned housing. Mobile home parks are the largest source of unsubsidized affordable housing, both in the country and the state. And for seniors, especially, mobile home parks are one of the few remaining sources of housing which offer stable, independent living in a small community. Most mobile home parks are zoned residential planned development, and most parks are at or near the maximum density allowable. So before we get into the details of the proposed amendments, we'll first review the definitions that we're using. A mobile home is a transportable structure designed to be used as a dwelling unit and meeting the requirements of federal, state, and/or Ventura County codes as they pertain to such structures. This is the existing definition in the noncoastal zoning ordinance and is not proposed for amendment. Under state law, the definition of a mobile home includes manufactured homes but does not include recreational vehicles unless they have occupied a mobile home site for nine or more consecutive months. A manufactured home, as defined by state law, is essentially the same as a mobile home, except that it was constructed in or after 1976. So we will use the term "mobile home" to refer to both mobile homes and manufactured These are definitions which are proposed for addition to Article II of the noncoastal zoning ordinance as part of the proposed amendments. The proposed definition of a mobile home park is an area of land where two or more spaces are rented or leased from mobile homes or manufactured homes to be used as dwellings. For the purposes of this definition, mobile home parks do not include county park campgrounds, county overnight parking zones, or residences provided by employers for the use of farmworkers or other employees and their families. The proposed definition of a senior mobile home park is a mobile home park with a minimum of 10 spaces in which at least 80% of the occupied mobile homes or manufactured homes are inhabited by or intended for habitation by at least one person who is 55 years of age or older. And this is a map of the county's senior mobile home parks, which we will return to The direction for this project comes from a letter from the Board of Supervisors directing planning division staff to create zoning specific to the county's mobile home parks to ensure their preservation. An overlay zone would accomplish this purpose without requiring the base zoning to be revised. A general mobile home park overlay zone, together with an overlay zone that would specially recognize the needs of seniors, would also address multiple goals of the county's 2014 to 2021 housing element of the general plan. Among these are to continue the utilization of mobile homes and manufactured homes in the unincorporated county as a means of providing dwelling units for lower-income households, and to provide opportunities for new and preserve existing senior housing, including senior ownership rental and manufactured housing. The overlay zones would also implement one of the housing element programs, which was identified as a priority program to be completed before the next housing element update. The board's direction for this project was inspired by the precedent set by similar overlay zones throughout the state. For the mobile home park overlay zone, just a few of the precedents that were looked at in the drafting of the ordinance are included here. For the senior mobile home park overlay zone, the closest precedent is the city of Ventura's, which was adopted in 2015. Another precedent is the city of Ucaipa's ordinance, which survived a legal challenge and was later used as a template for similar overlay zones elsewhere. So before outlining the need for the proposed amendments, I'll first review what existing protections are in place for the county's mobile home parks. Under Article 13 of the subdivision ordinance, a park may be converted to resident ownership with majority approval. Only one mobile home park is known to have been subdivided, but it was not later converted to resident ownership. The county's mobile home park rent control program applies to all but one of the unincorporated county's mobile home parks. This program requires all annual rent increases to be approved through a ministerial permit with some exceptions, and the amount that rents can be increased is tied to the Social Security Cost of Living Index, which is usually in the range of 2% to 3% per year. And finally, Article 17 of the noncoastal zoning ordinance prohibits the closure or conversion of a mobile home park without a mobile home park closure permit. For a closure permit to be approved by your commission and the Board of Supervisors, a finding must be made that adverse impacts of the park's closure will be reasonably mitigated as part of a relocation assistance plan. The relocation assistance is not required to fully cover the cost of a similar mobile home or a home in the same area, and parks are also exempt from these requirements in cases of bankruptcy. The purpose of the mobile home park overlay zone is to counter the threat of redevelopment, even with these existing protections in place. As we're all aware, housing has become increasingly unaffordable in California, the median home sales price increasing by almost 60% between 2010 and 2018. Largely as a result of this and the land value that these sites hold, almost 15,000 mobile home spaces have been lost in California over the past two decades. In places throughout the state where housing prices have risen dramatically, there are examples of mobile home parks that have closed or converted to other housing, some of these parks having had hundreds of spaces. In many of these instances, relocation assistance was required to be provided, but in case after case, residents are finding that the assistance was inadequate to fully cover the costs of finding decent housing elsewhere. And that's not to mention the intangible costs of eviction that can persist for years after on residents' health or the well-being of the community. As can be seen in the table below, outside of mobile home parks, local rents and home values are generally far less affordable. Relocation assistance is often not enough to cover the difference, and so park closures in other jurisdictions have often been accompanied by resident protests or litigation in many The purpose of the senior mobile home park overlay zone is to recognize the needs that seniors in particular have who are currently living in one of the county's senior mobile home parks. Seniors comprise 30% of the unincorporated county population, but over 50% of the population in its mobile home parks. And between 2010 and 2016, that population increased 17% compared to a total population increase of 4%. The largest increase over this period was in the Ojai area, where all of the senior parks are located and most of the county's mobile home parks. And the increase over this period was greater than almost any other age group anywhere in the county, except for the student population near CSUCI. However, seniors who are lower income or on fixed incomes have limited housing options available, and that availability is only likely to get worse if these current housing and demographic trends continue. And because so many seniors are on fixed incomes and have become so established in their communities, an eviction would be an especially disruptive event that would be very difficult to mitigate. But there are no existing legal protections against the conversion of senior parks to parks allowing occupancy by all ages in the county. Mobile home parks are different from other residential developments in that the State Department of Housing and Community Development largely has regulatory authority over their operations, but the county still retains authority over some matters, including zoning. This is supported by state law, which explicitly authorizes counties to establish zoning for mobile home parks and senior mobile home parks, and to establish the types of uses which can be allowed in these parks. A mobile home park overlay zone is also one of the recommended policies by HCD for the development of housing elements, and it's also encouraged by the state general plan guidelines. The senior mobile home park overlay zone is enabled by the state law mentioned above, as well as an exemption to the Federal Fair Housing Act's prohibition on age discrimination. According to the 55 and older exemption, a housing community may restrict the age of the residents who can live there if greater than 80% of the households have at least one resident over the age of 55. And finally, the legality of a senior mobile home park overlay zone is also explicitly supported by an opinion of the California Attorney General. And so now we'll talk more in detail about the actual content of the proposed ordinances. The mobile home park overlay zone is designed to discourage the redevelopment of mobile home parks by limiting the uses allowed on the sites where mobile home parks are currently located. The only uses allowed would be those which are associated with the continued operation of mobile home parks. This would apply to all of the 25 mobile home parks in the unincorporated county. The full ordinance is included in the hearing packet as exhibit five, so I'll focus on the most relevant section here, section 8109, 4.10.2. Under this section, the only uses which would be allowed would be mobile home parks, accessory structures and uses customarily incidental to the operation of mobile home parks, such as a community pool, accessory uses to dwellings, which are those enjoyed by other single-family dwellings, uses exempt from obtaining permits, such as home occupations and pet keeping, and other uses which are not reasonably expected to interfere with the operation of mobile home parks, subject to the planning director's determination. This ordinance would do nothing to stop mobile home park owners from adding spaces, expanding parks, or even selling parks as long as they remain in operation. Otherwise, this ordinance is not intended to interfere with park management or with the economic returns which owners have enjoyed. In addition to the mobile home park overlay zone, eight parks would also be placed in the senior mobile home park overlay zone. These are all parks which have designated themselves as parks primarily intended for seniors. To verify that at least 80% of the spaces are occupied by at least one person over the age of 55, a phone survey was conducted of all of the mobile home parks in the unincorporated county. Park management was asked how many spaces were senior occupied, and the only eight parks which met the threshold were those shown here, which were already operating as senior parks. The most relevant section of this ordinance is section 8109, 4.11.3.2. At least 80% of the occupied units in a senior mobile home park must be occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older. In the unlikely scenario that a park has vacancies which cause it to fall below its occupancy requirements, it still has up to two years to fill those vacancies, as long as the spaces are kept reserved for seniors in the meantime. These are also minimum occupancy requirements. There's nothing stopping a park from imposing stricter requirements, such as requiring that 100% of spaces be reserved for seniors, for example. Also, signage, advertising, park rules, regulations, rental agreements, and leases must state that the park is a senior mobile home park, and any advertisement for vacant space must state the same. Federal law requires that the ages of residents in senior parks be periodically verified. Section 8109, 4.11.4 requires that documentation that occupancy requirements are being met must be made available by park owners for inspection by the county upon request. The county will maintain a summary of that documentation. And acceptable documentation includes government-issued identification, such as a driver's license or other documents signed by a resident. And if a resident is unable or refuses to comply with the verification process, other acceptable documentation includes government records, prior applications, or a legal statement from an individual with personal knowledge of the occupant's ages. It is not necessary that park management know the age of every resident in the parks. So 60 days after adoption of this ordinance and every two years thereafter, what the county would receive from park management is a certification substantially like that shown below. It's expected that implementation of these requirements would be performed through the county's mobile home park rent control program. That way, most senior parks could submit their required documentation along with their As detailed in the draft resolution, exhibit four to the staff report, these ordinances are exempt from sequoia review because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility the ordinances may cause a significant effect on the environment, as the adoption of the ordinances will help maintain existing uses and have no potential for physical change to the environment. Section 15305 also exempts minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in changes in land use or density, and section 15308 exempts actions by regulatory agencies to assure the maintenance of the environment. Pursuant to Article 15 of the noncoastal zoning ordinance, the planning commission can recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the Board of Supervisors if these findings can be made. The proposed amendments would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. No development of new land uses are being proposed as part of these proposed amendments, only preservation of existing conditions through which the general welfare is expected to be improved. The proposed amendments represent good zoning practice. The overlay zone proposed would not change the base zoning of the properties affected, nor introduce uses which are inconsistent with the existing zoning of these properties. And the proposed amendments are consistent with the Ventura County general plan. A review of the general planned land use policies was conducted, and it was determined that the proposed amendments will not conflict with those policies, nor policies which are expected to be approved. To the contrary, the proposed amendments will support the implementation of the general plan housing element goals and policies. Based upon the information and analysis provided, planning division staff therefore recommends that the planning commission take the following actions reproduced in full here from the staff report. In brief, certify that the commission has reviewed and considered this staff report and has considered all comments received, and adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed ordinances. The Board of Supervisors' hearing is tentatively scheduled for December 10. Thank you, and we now welcome any questions you may have.
Do any members have questions of Aaron or staff? Okay, Jim?
Thank you. Two of these items we discussed on the phone, I realize they may yet refer to county council. One is in finding five of the staff report, you address consistency with the general plan. Understanding that when we reviewed the draft general plan, not the current one, but the one going forward, we did not address the housing element because we didn't have SCAG numbers to apply to it yet. If this ordinance requires changes to other than the housing element, specifically to the land use element, will there then be sequoia issues that apply to the program environmental impact report?
I think I'll defer that to council for a first attempt at answering that.
I think I understand where you're coming from. The overlay zones, my understanding is they will not require any changes to general plan land use designations that either currently exist or are being considered for the general plan update. And so that shouldn't be an issue, period. Even if that was the case, I doubt there would be a sequel issue because, as has been explained, these parks already exist, and so the intent of this ordinance is just to basically strengthen the probability that they'll remain in use as mobile home parks. And so there's basically not going to be a change to the existing environment, and so that is the sequel bottom line. It's a good question, and I'll look into it and discuss it with staff, but I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay. You know, I was thinking of other overlay zones that did get lumped into the land use element. I'm thinking about the wildlife connectivity or critical wildlife passage areas. I'm thinking about some overlay zones that sit in area, specific urbanized areas of the county. But that's fine, as long as they look into it. My second question, and it's more of a broad theoretical question, is I understand the purpose of the ordinance is to protect existing mobile home units, and particularly senior mobile home units. My concern is, as written, would the ordinance inadvertently limit future development of mobile home parks and specifically senior mobile home parks? Is there anything in the ordinance that, while we're attempting to protect what exists, would be a barrier to creating more? If that's a good solution, as an example, if SCAG gives us higher affordable and senior housing in the allocation, and that looks like a really good solution, what is the mechanism to keep that from being a barrier rather than something that we can use to strengthen protections for future mobile home parks?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, and it's a good point, I think, to clarify here. So yeah, obviously, we're wanting to lay an overlay zone over existing mobile home parks, but it's by no means exclusive of existing, so it's not like the ordinance is saying, okay, we're done with mobile home parks in the county. You know, the only mobile home parks we're going to have are within these overlays. That's not the case. And so if there's a need or interest in creating new mobile home parks, then that absolutely could occur, and that might require, you know, like you mentioned before, I don't know if it would require changing general plan land use designations or the base zoning designations. That could be done, but then, you know, to top it off, if you will, what presumably would happen would be this overlay zone ordinance would be amended if we needed to, I guess we would need to, to pick up the new mobile homes. And so we basically would change the overlay zone maps to pull in the new mobile home parks. But again, my main point is these overlay zones aren't exclusive. We're not shutting the door by any means on the creation of new mobile home parks.
Okay, then my next question is, or my last question, hopefully, is if a general plan amendment to amend the overlay zone to accommodate a new mobile home park development is required, does the financial burden, the cost of that additional application, fall on the applicant, thus maybe presenting a further barrier to someone wanting to develop a mobile home park?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, yeah, if, my thought there is that amending the overlay zone ordinance would be very perfunctory, and it would be a very small cost. A larger cost would be if we're having to change the base zoning and perhaps doing sequoia on that. But in terms of amending the overlay zone, like I said, the cost would be very, very small, and so I wouldn't think that would be a practical prohibition on establishing new parks.
Okay, thank you.
This might be a question for county council, but on one of your slides, you said the AG opinion was for cities, but you had two or three counties up there as examples that have established overlay zones. So I would assume that the AG's opinion also covers counties, not just cities?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Any further questions from the commission? I have a question, I guess best directed to Dave, has experience with the city of Ventura and what was done there. And my question would be, did the city of Ventura program, or does it include senior parks, a senior park overlay?
Yes, we added in the senior overlay. We had mobile home park designations before, so we were just going and adding the senior overlay as the action. And it was modeled after the Ucaipa one that had already substantiated through legal challenge, and most of the elements that you have in the ordinance proposed to you today is very similar to how the city of Ventura's ordinance operates.
And has that been a successful program?
Well, my term with the city ended in April, and since 2015, there hadn't been any changes to the mobile home parks themselves, their operations. They had reporting requirements similar to what's proposed in this ordinance. They had reporting requirements similar to what's proposed in this ordinance, and those were handled through our finance department at the city. We also had several that are in the coastal zone. So we had a follow-up action that's still on track to do, which is actually get the overlay adopted in coastal zone for those parks that are located in that vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, then, let's open up the public hearing. I have some speaker cards here. I have three. Jeff, Paula, Cindy, are there any others besides those three who would like to come forward and speak? If not, I'm sorry, what?
The first speaker. So Jeff was not.
Oh, the guy Jeff had to leave. Okay, so we have two speakers, Paula Osborne. Please come forward.
On behalf of the Golden Oaks Mobile Home Park and all of the parks around in the unincorporated area, we'd like to thank you all for the work that's being done to preserve the senior housing, and working with Gizmo, and ensuring that we have choice. So, thank you. And so, that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Very thorough work.
Next speaker, Cindy Ellis. Please come on down.
My name is Cindy Ellis, and my family has owned the Royal Mobile Home Park since 1972, almost 50 years. Our park is a senior park, which is located in the beautiful location. We have Ventura River running behind us, and the Ojai walking and biking trails in front of us. And we're a small park, we're only 40 spaces, but we take great pride in keeping a clean, well-kept park. We're family-owned and managed, and I'm also a senior citizen. So, our park almost burnt down during the recent Thomas Fire, but for the heroic efforts with the firefighters and emergency responders, and brave residents that stayed behind to watch over the park, the only damage we had was our fence burnt, but we made it through, and we've got a great group of senior citizens that live there. With all this being said, I'm standing before you wondering why we, as park owners, have the burden placed upon us for the County of Ventura wanting to place new zoning restrictions on us. And I'm finding out why, listening, but it just seems that we have affordable housing for seniors. That's what we've been doing for many, many years, and we continue to do so. We're responsible people, doing everything the law requires us to do. We are governed by the Housing and Community Development Title 25, Civil Codes of the Mobile Home Residency Law, Ventura Rent Control. We regularly attend educational conferences, annual conventions, webinars put on by the Western Manufacturer Association. We do everything in our power to keep our park a clean, safe, affordable, and happy place to live. About eight years ago, we replaced our underground utilities, gas, water, and electric. We took out a loan. It was a costly undertaking. We, as park owners, footed the bill, and we did not pass it on to our residents. Being my father's daughter, I feel that's important that I stand here before you to ask, if it isn't broken, why fix it? Why does government, especially in the state of California, think that it needs to come in and place unneeded restrictions on things that are working just fine, and have been for years? There's no threats of park owners wanting to close down parks or change senior parks into all-age parks in our area. Affordable senior housing is really happening, are already happening, and we are under rent control. In our park, additionally, I currently have three of 40 spaces owned by residents who use it as their second home. One of those uses it as their third home, and we are in rent control. I find it extremely difficult to follow in my parents' footsteps, to work hard, be honest and fair, and think that everything's going to be great. That's not, that's not the case, and we're burdened with more and more restrictions placed on us. Case in point, several years ago, the property that we own directly north of the park, over five acres, could have been expanded to double size of our mobile home park, but because of the restrictions on Highway 33 and the traffic, they took that opportunity away. That could have been developed for more affordable senior housing. The Ventura River that runs behind our park can no longer be cleared of vegetation. We have bamboo growing and all sorts of stuff. But because of the governmental restrictions, this puts our senior residents at risk. We're flooding, and debris, and things like that, that we worry about for all these years. Additionally, the new levy that the county put in several years ago apparently wasn't billed up to FEMA specifications, and it's not certified, my understanding, but it gives us concerns that we all have to worry about. My point in all of this is why do we have to have more and more restrictions placed on us when there's no threat, when we are taking care of our own business and property? Shouldn't we all pause, take further discussions on this whole situation, and hear from other park owners and other people to find out exactly what we do and how it's ran? As my father stated in his letter dated November 11, 1982, to Maggie Erickson and all the Board of Supervisors, when they were planning to implement the rent control on the parks in Ventura, and I'm quoting his letter, "As you can see by my rent schedule, I am doing anything but gouging. My average rent is $112.10. My park is by far average, above average in beauty and maintenance. All mobile home parks are not cut from the same cloth. You can see there is more than meets the eye on owning a mobile home park. I feel we meet a need in this area, and I strive to provide a pleasant place to live for a reasonable amount." He continues, "I must add that I do not like government telling me how to do this, but I do appreciate all that you do in running the government." His letter was signed, "Sincerely, Bill Porter," and I am his daughter, "who continues to do exactly what my father always did, but gets more difficult every day." And it just makes me wonder, you know, how we can have further discussions before we start making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward and put your name on a speaker's card, and we'll be happy to hear Joy McCollum?
Thank you, everybody, for all you, doing all your good work. I felt the need to speak because I live in the Ojai Valley Estates in Ojai, and I was listening with great interest to the owner of the park that she was speaking, and I really have a lot of empathy for her, because she seems to be a really great management or owner of a park. But that does not protect everybody who lives in parks that have predatory landlords. And my park was owned by the Chinese equivalent of the Trump family, and they are predatory landlords that we've had to deal with in the past. And so I think that the reason why there are, there's a rent control or rent review board, and the reason there are these hearings, and the reason there are more regulations than the previous speaker would like to see happening, I think most residents of parks really feel that we need all the protection that we can have, because we're a vulnerable population, particularly seniors who are living in fixed incomes. And there are procedures in place for doing annual raises tied to different indexes or the Social Security Index. And so I just wanted to speak up on behalf of this vulnerable population, where we can have, our parks may be sold out from under us, the land out from under us, to be redeveloped into condominiums, or malls, or something. But I just wanted to speak out that I really appreciate that there are these attempts to have regulations that protect these vulnerable people. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're still available. Would you like to speak? Please come down and fill out a card, and we will hear you. And that's true of anybody else who would like, please come down and fill out a card. Coming up on Last Chance, so if you want to speak, come on down and fill out a card. Deon Hanson?
Correct.
Okay, Deon?
Good morning. My concern is, and again, this is in direct response to the lady who is speaking, is that there are numerous examples of mobile home parks all across the nation who have been subject to redevelopment against the will of their residents, and, again, with predatory intent and demonstrable harm to the residents. There was, there's a popular news satire program called Last Week Tonight that explicitly covered this particular topic about two, perhaps three weeks ago, in great depth. They dedicated a full half-hour segment to it, demonstrating how investment groups come in and purchase the land, and immediately drive the rents up, in some cases as much as doubling them, for vulnerable populations. It is obvious that governments, one of the functions of government is to protect all of its citizens, all of its subjects, especially those that may not be able to do so by themselves. And this, from my understanding of the ordinance being proposed, it's not an additional restriction, it's a strengthening of existing restrictions and protections, which is basically essential to people, to current residents that may not be able to enact or implement those restrictions, or avail themselves of the protections necessary. And this is one of the functions of government at any level, is to protect the citizens. So, very, I don't find this an onerous or unreasonable implementation, and I believe that were to be suitably explained to all the relevant people that applies to, that the majority would agree that it is not unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Larry Mangell. Is that how you say it? Mangell? Come on up.
Thanks for having us. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Deutsch, is it? It was an excellent presentation. Thank you for that. Very clear, and I could understand it, too. So, that was good. I'm also a resident of a senior mobile home park in Ojai, Golden Oaks. And referencing the young lady that spoke about, you know, too many overlays and regulations on landlords, basically is what they are. Seniors are always under a threat. They're always worried, because they are under fixed incomes, most of them. So the threat of having their homes pulled out, the rug pulled out from under them, is very real. So having an extra protection in place to ease their concerns is very important. I know for my family, and for those neighbors that we have, it's also equally as important to them. So having the extra security of knowing that they don't have to uproot and lose their investment, whatever they do have in the mobile home, their home, and then having to relocate at our age, is daunting task. So, I want to give credit to a lady that's not here today. Her name is Liz Cole, and she kind of spearheaded this drive to encourage the county and other communities to provide equal protection for senior citizens. And I appreciate her with all my heart, too. So I want to thank you for this opportunity to hear us as seniors, and I know many of you can relate, that having this extra security is important to us. And Lord knows, I don't want to have to move if my landlord, if our owner of our property decided they wanted to sell it and convert the park. I don't want to have to do this again. I'm happy where we are. We have a beautiful park, beautiful neighbors, and just thank you for this, and thank you again. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Larry, and thank you to all the speakers. Are there any other people who would like to speak? Okay, please come fill out a card, and we'll be happy to hear you.
I wasn't going to speak, but I decided to. My name's Richard Basir. I'm with Basir and Kassenheiser. We manage Oxnard Shores and several other communities here in the state of California. There's a couple of things that I would like to bring to your attention in regards to the ordinance you're proposing. As the lady said, sometimes the government steps in when it's really not needed, and I haven't seen it in this area, that it's really been one of those issues. And the issue also of zoning for senior, senior parks. Does everybody understand truly what senior parks are? Because the way the ordinance is written, it may be legal in your definition, but again, federal government defines senior communities. Everybody has to be 62 and over, everybody. So if you're going to put senior overlay zoning on these communities, you're zoning it for 62 and over. It's not older person, parks zone for older persons. Older person communities are, everybody has to be, one person has to be 55, and a secondary age can be all the way down to 18. So you might have communities that you think that you're, these people are going to be getting, that they may not be getting. Do you understand that a 55-plus community can have a secondary age all the way down to 18? See, nobody brings these things up, and then we have to deal with it later on when we have the residents get upset over it. You know, we have all-age communities, probably out of the 15,000 spaces that we oversee, probably about 70% are all-age communities. You would, I dare you, go into Oxnard Shores, if you've ever been to Oxnard Shores, that's an all-age community. We take really great care of those communities. Just because there's younger people that live in those communities doesn't mean they're bad communities. So the zoning to put overlaying zoning in for seniors, I'm not really sure why there has to be that kind of zoning. You know, if there's a fear that the people think there's going to be younger people living in the park, you understand the 80/20 rule, the 80/20 rule, too. Somebody needs to do a little more evaluation of what the 80/20 rule is. The 20% rule, some people think that you can automatically allow 20% of the people to move in to be of any age, correct? And so is that the intent? Probably not, because you're trying to run a 55, an older person, community, and yet you are going to allow 20% of the people in that can be of a younger age, all right? So there is no restrictions on what those 20% can be. In other words, you could actually let 20% of those people be family. All right? So I think some more research needs to be done, as the lady said, because if you really start looking, and maybe some of these ordinances haven't been challenged on these issues yet, but you're going to start seeing it, because when government gets involved more and more in our business, we used to be the largest developer in the state of California. We haven't built a new park in 22 years. And you know, there's a law that was passed in the state of California that said all new parks will be preempt from rent control. But it can be preempt for one day, and you could pass rent control the next day, and that's why we aren't building any parks. We've added a few spaces. I've added two spaces down at Oxnard Shores. Average rent in the parks under $700. New spaces rent for $1,500, and they rent in a day. So again, when you're looking at what's going on in these communities, what we're trying to do is be responsible owners, but the problem is, we keep getting government intervention in our business, and where we try and come up with resolutions by long-term leases, which is a form of rent control in our own base, is that we get hit with additional things. And what happens is, then we start having individual fights with residents over what a senior community is, what it isn't. And so I would just suggest that we make sure that if you are going to do something, that you get the terminology right, and that you go back that you get the terminology right and that you go back and take just a little harder look at what's going on and what is truly needed in this area. Again, I would appreciate just looking at those subjects. The other thing, somebody mentioned that I didn't even know was in your thing about RVs. RVs that are in mobile home park communities, right? That have been there nine months, you said, have all the rights of a mobile home. They don't. They don't have the right of resale. So, there are things that you're, that are in these ordinances that are actually against federal or state law that I think people don't even take into consideration. And all it does is cause us lawsuits downstream. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I would like to meet with the city attorney if you would so direct it that, that he and I could discuss some of this stuff at a later date. But again, I would answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else? We're, we're here to listen and we will take additional testimony hearing. Nobody out there? We'll close the public hearing.
Just a moment, please.
There is one? Okay, come on down.
Phil, I had a question.
Yes.
Do you want to take with the question? I wanted to follow up with the points that he said.
Yeah, let's wait till she's done.
Okay.
My name is Joyce McWilliams and I live in the El Surino Mobile Park in Ojai. I'm dealing with something now that I thought should be shared with the committee. I have living with me a homeless senior. She's 75. And I, she's an acquaintance that I wanted to help because she cannot find housing. She has, her Section 8 has been dismissed because of certain things. Well, I've known her for many years and I thought, well, I'll just help her, give her a temporary place to live until she could find a rental. Well, as you know, there's no, there's really very little affordable housing for seniors who are on fixed interest incomes and who are on help, you know, with their medical and the other. And their income is so low that they can't, they can't apply for any of these services. So, I'm just saying, she is with me. She's homeless. And she has been taking over my household. Now, I'm just bringing this to your attention because I'm going through procedures to have her evicted because she's been ignoring my pleas for her to leave. But as you know, there are a number of seniors who are, who are dealing with homelessness at this point and who can't afford the rents or whatever else is, is available because of their income being so low. And that number is increasing. So, those of us who have friends or whatever, trying to help in our parks, it causes a big problem because some of these people know, have been around a long time seeking housing and have been evicted from various situations with Section 8 or whatever that we don't know about. And we're helping our friends and then we have a problem of getting them out of the park. Well, my park has been very cooperative, our owner, our manager. And I'm now today going to see CAFS, Community Assistance Program, to see that I can get her evicted. I hate to do that, but she's taking over my household. And we're vulnerable. Seniors are vulnerable because we are caring and we're dealing with situations we have to deal with. So, we, we extend our compassion to those who are less fortunate. So, I just think that this should be brought to the attention of the Board of Supervisors, whoever is, who's ever taken care of these situations like today. Because it's a growing problem. I'm just one in the park. And in outside of my park, there are many, many issues of dealing with this problem, having to come to the point of eviction, sometimes to sell their homes, to rid themselves of, of seniors who are doing this kind of thing and bringing in their families as well to occupy the home. So, I just want you to know, in the mobile home park, we have more regulations in our, in our, our parks and, and county. So, I just wanted to share this with you because I think it's extremely important to look at. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Now, did, did you suggest that we don't close the public hearing quite yet?
Oh, I just, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Basir or?
Basir.
Basir's point. And he submitted a comment card, too, saying that senior is 62 years of age. Federal, is there a conflict between what we're proposing to adopt and these terms? Older community, older person communities versus senior and the age limits?
We don't believe so. There are two exemptions to the federal prohibition on age discrimination that we were aware of. One of them is the 62 and older exemption and the other is the 55 and older exemption. And we tried to closely follow the guidance provided by federal law and that was looked at by our counsel, three attorneys, to make sure that we were in compliance with that 55 and older exemption and its requirements. It was our intention to allow that 20% to not be households with at least one resident over the age of 55. But I would reiterate that these are minimum requirements. Many of the senior parks are already operating above that 80% threshold, many at 100%, and they can institute their own rules. And if counsel would like to clarify any of the finer points of, of the legality of that, they can, but that is something that we looked at closely to make sure that we were in compliance.
Yeah, so this is actually, in my mind, an interesting legal issue. So, the, the default legal rule, and it's probably pretty obvious under state and federal housing law, is that, is that you can't discriminate against someone because of their age. And so, but then there's an exception to that rule and it's very specific under federal law that says you can discriminate as long, and it's basically a safe harbor, as long as, and if you're municipality and you're doing like, you know, senior overlay mobile home ordinance like this, you can, you can discriminate basically as long as you ensure that at least, and this is the exact language of the federal law, at least 80% of the units are occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older per unit. And so, that's the safe harbor language and that's the exact same language that we used in our ordinance, just to ensure that there's no question that we comply with that exception. And so, that's why, we, we don't have a lot of flexibility there. But as Owen said, they're minimum requirements. And so, we're not saying that you have to allow 20% of younger people to live in your park. We're just saying that's the minimum. And so, we have to, a, a, as Owen went over in his presentation, we, we have to help ensure that the parks maintain, maintain that floor of older residents living there in order to continue qualifying for the exemption. And so, that's what we've done. And then, the gentleman, he, he, I, he might have valid points about the, the, you know, definitional issues because the, the term used in federal law is housing for older persons. And so, that might be different than, you know, terminology than senior park. I'm, I'm not aware of that. I'm not, you know, an expert in this field. And so, but I wouldn't say, see that as a legal issue as much as definitional. And, and yeah, maybe it does create a misunderstanding between what people think of as a senior mobile home park versus maybe a, a mobile home park for older persons. But again, in terms of the substance of our law, we're just tracking this federal law safe harbor and, and my legal advice is we have no flexibility there.
Okay, and, and to follow up again on another question that he brought up was RVs in mobile home parks can't be resold. They don't have the right of resale. Is that, is that consistent with what is before us today?
Yeah, we're, we're not changing anything in, in that regard. None of these amendments address the, the types of mobile homes that are allowed in these parks or anything related to that. I was just referencing the fact that in-law recreational vehicles can sometimes be considered mobile homes for purposes of regulation. That's the state law. So, I was just referencing that as part of the definition of a mobile home. But that's not anything that is being affected by these ordinances.
It's not being affected?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have one more speaker card here. Susan Colishaw.
Colishaw, thank you. Good morning. Excuse me. I would like to make two comments. One is, I believe older people don't have enough people to speak for them and so, I'm very happy that you're doing that. Our mobile park managers and owners have a team of legal professionals behind them. And what happens in one park, I often see, happens suddenly across the state or across the country. And as seniors, we don't have the ability or the funds to have legal people behind us to stand up for our rights. And so, I, we need this. And because one person is very nice and they have a wonderful park does not mean that all the parks are going to do that. So, we, I think we need this amendment. And secondly, this is probably not on the topic, but as far as the mobile home rents go, every year there's supposed to be, the raise, it's, is supposed to be tied to the social security raise. And we haven't had a social security raise in a few years and yet our mobile home park raises its, our rent 2% every year. For people who are on a fixed income and have no other outside income coming in, this is a real hardship. I've seen it, especially for one person living in a mobile home. The rents are just getting to be outrageous. When I moved in, I paid maybe $500 or $600. Now, I'm paying over $1,000 a month and that's only in about seven years. We have, we have less rights than apartment renters. We're forced to pay fees for television, cable things that we don't want. And there are just, there are about $200 in other fees aside from the rent that mobile homeowners have to pay and we have no recourse. So, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for this, but I needed to say this. So, I, I think this is, we need government in our, on our side. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, last chance here. Anybody else like to come speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I would point out, we have written public comments, have been submitted to the Planning Commission, both pro and con. At this point, I would open it up to deliberations by the planning commissioners.
I have a question, staff. There was three or four written comments submitted, I assume by the Mobile Home Park Owners Association. And they all basically said the same thing as this gentleman said today, that there is very little communications with them and I just want to know if that's true.
For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager in the Resource Management Agency Planning Division. Commissioner McPhail, it is accurate to say that there wasn't a large outreach to the property owners of the mobile home parks at this point in time. However, we have been conferring regarding a plan to have some meetings with them, to formally go over and explain the ordinance to them in detail before the board hearing, which is scheduled for December 10th at this point in time.
I'm, for all these people in, in the audience who spoke, I'm not against this overlay ordinance, so don't throw tomatoes at me. But I think it would have been appropriate to have meetings with them before it came to our commission. I think that would have been more appropriate to get all the parties together to discuss it before it came to our commission. Regardless of what we may vote today, if, you're going to have meetings after the fact. And I understand it was brought forward by the Board of Supervisors, but it just seems logical to me that those discussions would have taken place before it came to us today. And, and I'm not degrading anybody, but it just seems that would have been the right thing to do, not wait for our approval or denial and then do it in between our meeting and the board. That's all. I just, I, I, I have a problem with that kind of procedure. That's all.
Commissioner King?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner McPhail, for raising that issue. My question is, what outreach was there to the residents of these mobile home parks? Because it seems a lot of people got the message from comments received prior to the meeting and obviously the turnout at this meeting. So, how, how did we reach out to them? And, and then, you know, it begs the next question. Do the owners have representation onsite at these parks? And would they have been included in the distribution of that communication?
Commissioner King, yes. The outreach to the residents of the mobile home parks was exactly the same as the outreach to the property owners of the mobile home parks. And so, that consisted of simply sending out notices that went out. And I think that was in the actual Planning Commission hearing packet. It explains when those went out. There was a notice in the newspaper, then there were actual physical mail notices and cards that went out to all of the residents and to the property managers of those parks. And maybe Mr. Deutsch can explain whether, was there a separate mailing to the property managers?
The property managers either would have been included in the list of residents of the mobile home park, if they were residents of those parks, or in the separate list of owners of the parks that we noticed, I believe. I can also add, as a small secondary note, there was an announcement made about this at a rent review board hearing approximately a year ago. And then, it's also been posted on the Planning Division's website since April, I believe. And then, the most intensive outreach has been done in the weeks prior to this hearing.
Okay, so, as I understand it, there actually was a mailing to interested parties, which included property managers, which under the law of agency are essential, that's notice to the principal owners. So, now the question becomes one of, how much time did they have? I mean, I think we got this packet a week ago, ballpark. So, am I to assume that they got it a week ago also or a week ago less the mailing time?
It would have been, I don't remember the exact date. I think it was two weeks prior to this.
Okay.
As well as noticed in two newspapers. But I think your, your basic understanding is correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Questions of staff? Anyone care to make a proposal?
I, I have a question of staff. I understand the Board of Supervisors is going to hear this on December 10th. And what is the staff's, you know, charge going forward between now and when the Board of Supervisors hears this with regard to meeting with park owners and managers?
We, the staff would be available to meet either collectively with the owners or separately. And we can set that up prior to the December hearing. We'd want to, we can do that in the next month.
Okay, so that could be part of our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors if, if we move this forward?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Richard?
Just, just a question for clarity, as I read the report. The one mobile home park on the Oxnard Plain down by Point Magoo, Naval Air Park or something like that. Obviously, it's in a very sensitive area there because of the flight pattern, et cetera. And as I, as I read the report, if it ever were to change property owner, that the Navy would have first opportunity to, to purchase the property. would have first opportunity to, to purchase the property and eliminate that hazard from its flight plan. Can you explain that to me?
I believe in the joint land use study that was written by the naval base, that was one of their requests, that if the park is sold, that they be given priority in purchasing it. And we have been in correspondence with contact at that Navy base. We have a good working relationship and prior to this hearing, we've been speaking about that issue. And we would be willing to continue to talk about that. The Navy explicitly recognized in their study that there are regulatory issues to closing a park and they seemed sensitive to that, so that's something that we'll negotiate forward, going forward, I expect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Anybody want to make a suggested motion on this?
I'll move staff's recommended actions and include a recommendation from the Planning Commission that staff meet with interested, all interested parties to work towards clarification maybe, or changes that, that may or may not need to be made, but to move it forward to the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. Appreciate your interest in what we do here at the Planning Commission. Okay, well, we'll take a minute here for people to leave the room and then we'll continue. So pause a couple of minutes here. We urge people to, to leave as quickly as possible. Thank you.
I, when I got up to the, the spot, the, the car that had caught on fire was on a flatbed tow truck. The other car that looked
On the agenda is item six, a discussion from staff.
Thank you. So looking ahead on your calendar, we have an item scheduled for September 12th. These are two zone change applications that your commission would be reviewing. At this point, we don't have anything yet set for October. We have tentative items in November, looking at potential zoning ordinance updates. As far as what's been at the Board of Supervisors, most recently on July 23rd, we held a de novo hearing related to the Renaissance Petroleum Project. That project, which had previously been reviewed by your board, on this date, the Board of Supervisors recommended denial, giving direction to staff to update findings. And we will return on September 24th with the denial action on the Renaissance Petroleum Project.
Is that the, the location out there on the Oxnard Plain?
Yes.
Off Edding Road or?
Edding Road, 3214, Edding Road.
Just trying to recollect my, fresh my memory.
And when is that?
Well, it will return only for the resolution of denial to be approved by the Board of Supervisors on September 24th.
Okay.
Would you repeat what was on the 12th again, please?
Coming up on the 12th, sorry, we have two items for you. These are zone change applications for changing from open space to agricultural. And these relate to the Jefferson Farms, which is Bixby Road, Moore Park, and Rincon Creek Ranch, located off of Stanley Park Road, Carpinteria.
Any other questions of staff? The next item would be any things that the Planning Commission would like to bring forward?
I was so relieved that you guys started the meeting without me. I was stuck in traffic, couldn't get through to Megan, couldn't get through to Phil. I'm glad you were at the ready and, give me back my cattle. No. And thank you for your, your patience and understanding. Jim was in accident debris as well. I'm glad we're all safe.
Mr. McPhail.
I'd just like to say to staff that where I was coming from was from my previous life as the ag commissioner for the county. And when we had issues, we did try to get everybody together before any decisions were made. So that's where I was coming from, from my past life.
Anything else? Just a question. One of the meetings back in June, I raised the issue about training and Assistant County Council was going to bring forward some response to that, or are we anywhere near report?
Yeah, you know what, I reached out to the, and I'm passing the buck. I, I reached out to the Planning Division because that's, training's not really in my purview necessarily. But I guess just to clarify, and my understanding is you're, you're wanting training regarding substantive land use law? Is that it? Or is it more like Brown Act and Conflict of Interest?
Any training that would be beneficial for commissioners, especially some of us newbies.
Okay.
And what to do if we are threatened with violence?
Yeah, that was
Yeah, right, I know. And so those, yeah, I've, yeah, it's been a busy couple of months. So those are two separate issues and I know they're both outstanding. In terms of the, the training, every, and maybe you've already done this, every two years, members of boards and commissions have to do the AB 1234.
That's the ethics?
That's ethics training.
Okay.
That goes into Conflict of Interest and, and Brown Act. And so I'm not sure, do you know when the last time you had that training is?
Well, I did it within a month of when I was sworn in, so.
Okay. And so that will cover, like I said, or should have covered the Brown Act and Conflict of Interest. And that, so I reached out to the Planning Division in terms of substantive, more substantive land use type training. And so I know they're looking into that. And so they're going to get you information on those opportunities.
Commissioner King, if I can interject, so I'm week seven in my new role here, and that's been brought to my attention. So we're looking at the opportunities of available trainings, whether we do them live here or whether there's other offsite conferences. There are a range of different things provided throughout the year. We have some things related with the American Planning Association, Central Coast section that provides trainings and things. So I, it's on my list. Kim Pearlhart provided that to me and we've talked with Jeff as well. So I've got that on my list and I'll be able to come back at our September date and give you some more information about what might be available in the immediacy.
I appreciate it. I just didn't want it to fall completely off the radar.
Yeah, no, and we apologize, it's, it's been a while. And then regarding to Chair Dukas's question on, I'll say, you know, keeping order and decorum, I have been looking into that issue as well and
And, and free speech and limits there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, you know, what we could do there and, you know, what, what I realize and, and so one of my first questions there, it was to, to my bosses, it's, which is, you know, a lot of cities and counties have rules of decorum. And I asked, does our county have that? And we do, they're not called rules of decorum, but there's actually a statement that's included in every Board of Supervisors standard agenda, which is very good language. And so I'm, I haven't even talked to the Planning Division about this yet, but I want, I think that language should be on the Planning Commission's agenda too. And it basically says, the, the bottom line rule, and I'm getting to a penny bit of training now, but I'd be happy to come back with more thorough training. The bottom line rule is that, you know, in order to have everyone feel comfortable at the meeting, we can't have anyone taking action that disrupts the meeting. And so we, you know, discourage people from booing, clapping, cheering, and just have everyone remain silent and neutral. And so the, in terms of the legal standard and First Amendment rights, you don't have a First Amendment right to disrupt the meeting. You can obviously criticize or comment, comment on anything you want, and we can't take action based on comment. But once someone starts disrupting, that's when there's an issue. And so basically, I can go over a good protocol there in terms of giving a warning, clearing the room, you know, having a recess. But that's the bottom line. So I, I think that we should add that standard decorum language to the Planning Commission agenda, like I said, because it lets everyone know the ground rules, which are, are very clear. And by the way, I mean, you've done a good job in, in keeping the order based on those and it's, it's kind of common sense. But, so I think that's the first step. The second step is that, yeah, I can and will come back and give more detailed training in terms of a protocol and implementing those.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, in that case.